Are you taking notes, Debbie? Or is that what's going on?
Yep.
So we've got several employees, Theodore, dead. Misty, Nolan. They called the council. Okay. The agenda has changed as far as the payments, but I don't believe anything else has changed.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, new bills in between $123,189.51.
Makes a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Current claims with its new number of $93,520.78.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
About the $29,088 master plan update. Is this budgeted for?
I believe...
Budgeted for?
Sorry, I didn't hear what amount.
Is this budgeted for the $29,000 for the airport improvement, master plan?
Airport improvement, yeah.
I believe that's for a grant.
That's in their budget? Part of the grant. It came out of sales tax.
That's where the airport was budgeted for.
Okay.
The airport project is budgeted out of sales tax.
Okay, so that amount was in 2014, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
How far over budget is the airport?
The airport's over budget, but the sales tax, that's coming out of sales tax money.
That's different than their budget.
Yes.
So that doesn't come out of their budget?
No.
No, you don't. But you're funding the airport with sales tax money, so it's still...
That project, it's a grant.
Right.
Yes, it's the grant that they got.
Was it a matching grant or something?
I don't know about the grant. You have to ask Tracy about the grant though. I don't know.
All right, maybe he knows. Are you from the airport?
Yeah.
Do you know?
Do I know what?
Anything about the grant?
For the master plan, I believe it's, usually it's a matching grant, and Carolyn, I'm only speculating, so I believe it is a matching grant. It's mostly funded from grand dollars.
Okay.
I don't think it's totally matching. I remember us talking about the grant, the first year, remember, because of turnaround thing that we didn't have to put in stuff? FAA said we had to do it. And we changed engineer firms and stuff. I think it's a grant, but we didn't have to match. It wasn't a matching grant.
Well, sometimes it's a percentage.
Usually it's a percentage.
Very small percentage that the city has to cover.
It's been 3 percent.
Why are we so over budgeted at the airport, I guess?
That hangar.
The hangar?
There's a lot of things, but the hangar is a big thing.
But as Debbie pointed out, this is a different budget.
Well, yeah, still I'm asking, I guess, I'm curious if we're gonna have to take out contingency, or how are we gonna cover, I guess, the shortfall?
It's usually out of sales tax. For the plunge and for, you know, anything that's...
Well, the plunge is supposed to be an enterprise fund.
Right, but it is covered through sales tax dollars if they don't meet the budget.
Well, you're saying that was plunge also, so you're saying we're gonna have to take much out of...
I'm saying we're about, I think we're about even there. We're close. As an example.
That's the way the bond was set up for the plunge, with sales tax, but I don't know how the airport's set up to come out of sales tax.
The master plan's funded differently than his budget. And I actually meet with the engineer tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., and I will be happy to ask him those questions.
Yeah, but that's not what I asked. Wes asked. I'm just curious. I guess I asked for an update on Evan's plunge. Do we get that all done, I guess?
We've got some adjustments made in it, and right now it's sitting in the good with about, after we took that $150,000, about $650,000 in its enterprise fund, $650,000.
You're telling me the plunge is to the good?
Well, they got extra revenue from the loan, the $1.9 million loan.
Okay, but that's not revenue, that's a loan.
Well, there's extra money in the enterprise fund for the plunge because of the excess in loan money that they got. So we're not taking any sales tax right now to make the plunge payments, even though that's the way the bonds were...
Yeah, I was referring to how the bond is written.
Well, we're how the bonds are. To the shortfall, it comes out of sales tax, and a lot of people weren't aware of that.
It didn't come out of sales tax money.
This year.
That's what I'm saying. I don't know what's gonna happen.
I want a full printout. I want to see exactly where we're at. I want to see expense, I want to see profit. I want...
I can tell you that.
Okay?
I did ask for it today, and they don't have everything in yet this month, so you'll have to ask for it next month.
Okay, that's what I just asked. Thank you.
So for current claims, are there any, is there any other discussion?
I'd like to just more comment than anything on the testing for the materials and inspection of the water main projects. I guess, I don't think any of us have ever seen any of those tests. So I just don't know.
You think of the inspection? This is the inspection?
Yeah, that's that.
We didn't come up the invoice, the results didn't come up the invoice.
Where is that one?
On the amended sheet, the current claims on the last item.
On the last one?
Tracy has probably.
That's a difficult one.
And I don't even know at all they tested. I think we did some compaction test, but, you know, none of that information got shared.
You know when they did that?
Here's the invoice. Shows nuclear density tests, engineering technician, geotechnical engineer, secretarial staff, project manager, trip charge, and drive time. Didn't have any of the results of any of the tests. The date of the invoice is December 24th.
What date did they do the test?
Doesn't show on here. Just says job, materials testing and inspection, 2014 water main replacement. The details of the results of the tests and the date of the testing.
Saying that something I didn't get shared with us.
Given the discussion, do we want to approve current claims, or is this something...
I have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. I just want to make sure we just have bigger issue there. But yeah, normally I do think it's reasonable to make sure we all get to the test and aware of it. Okay, communications from the public, Kim Moore? Oh, I'm sorry, C here, decreased December 50th. Do we need a vote on that, or is that just FYI?
Just FYI?
Okay.
What was it for?
Teresa Moss from the police department. That's her monthly wage for cleaning. And Bob Evans, before he retired, turned in a bill, and then so did Mike Close. So when we were printing out the checks, we noticed that there were two of them, and just one of them out.
Thank you. Okay, Kim?
Where would you like me, just here?
Wherever you're comfortable. Busy room today.
Well, as most of you know, I'm the manager of Health for Life Fitness, and I have been manager for the last four years, going into our fifth year. And I have sat quiet through many city council meetings while the city, after they purchased the plunge. And just getting straight to the point, I feel that we have a city entity that is in direct competition with a private entity, meaning Health for Life Fitness. I did make a call out to all of the city council members and invited all of you out to come and take a tour of what we have to offer out there. The reason why this came to light specifically is because at the last city council member, we had, was on the agenda for somebody to bring in a boxing facility. I was actually shocked that none of you raised your hand and said, "Wait a minute. Health for Life offers boxing out there." We are a taxpaying entity, and I work my butt off to make sure that we have a clean 24/7 secure facility and that we're meeting the needs of our local community. When the plunge took, when I actually took over, four years ago, Evan's Plunge was privately owned. I actually went in, the owner said, "Kim, I want you setting this up the way you see fit for the community." Evan's Plunge was privately owned at the time, and I said, "There's no way I want to be at a pool, and I don't want to compete." You know, the population here does not support two gyms, nor would it support two pools. We just don't have the demographics. So I chose to take out the pool and just be a full-fledged gym. And ever since the city took it over, we are now on our second manager, and I believe both managers have their best interest at heart, Evan's Plunge. But coming at straight attack at me, wanting to offer Zumba, offer these classes, now most recently wanting to do a fundraiser to bring in commercial-grade equipment, that's in direct competition with me, and I don't believe that is fair, nor that it's legal to do. Rapid City has a population of over 70,000 people. They have four full-fledged gyms. Now, they have other little small things such as ballet, dance, et cetera, but it's not, I mean, you break that up into four different areas, that's over 17,000 people supporting those gyms. We're in demographics of 3,500. Now, when you guys all went in to purchase the plunge and you guys made those decisions, there are false numbers being thrown out there. Not one time did anybody come to me and say, "Kim, are these these numbers?" When the plunge closed down, and it's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a three-season facility. Am I wrong on that?
It has been a four. There's nothing to say there.
But is it set up for code for a three-season facility? Okay. Everybody thinks that we're making handle with fist out there. I mean, there are months where I'm at $4,000 a month gross, okay? There's months where I make double that, okay? But we have an off-season and an on-season. And trying to allow volunteers, I'm gonna speak as just a taxpayer here, having volunteers go in there, 50, how many volunteers do you have, TD?
We have a registered 66, but each time we have an event, we usually have between three and four that actually come.
But under fundraising events?
Which one specifically?
Just fundraising events. In general, you've got, what, 50, 66 people out there promoting Evan's Plunge? It's embarrassing. It looks like the plunge is desperate. But two, as a business management manager, I'm one person, we're a taxpaying business, and I just want the plunge to back off of what we already offer, instead of trying to duplicate what we have. If they don't, you're gonna shut down a taxpaying business, and the city's gonna lose a taxpaying business.
I agree with you.
So my thing is, and I want to thank all of the city council members that did take their time to come out to see what we have to offer. I appreciate you taking that time, because I do think it's every one of your responsibilities to know what every single taxpaying business offers in our community, so that we're not duplicating that, that we can support local business. I hear you guys always talking about supporting local business, spending dollars here, but when you have a city entity competing with a private entity, I got a real big problem with that.
Well, you're correct me if I'm mistaken, but according to our engineering report we paid for, they basically told us to get away from the gym environment. Is that right? It's in your engineering report that we hired for...
Get away from the gym?
Yeah, to do away from it.
I said that that floor ain't really strong enough to...
It's in the report. I have a copy of that one.
I've seen that report. I've got a copy of that report.
It's been there for a long time. I, it's been...
But, the argument, Georgia... Engineer's report.
The argument, Georgia, is that was a private business at the time. When the city took that on, that brings out a whole new ballgame.
So if somebody else had a pool in town, we're supposed to close the pool?
There is no other pool. The city were...
I'm just saying if it were private.
The plunge would have never, you guys would have never bought that if there was another pool, because it's in direct competition. We've got a new business in town. Are you gonna run her out if you, if the plunge starts offering...
I think we're confusing a little bit here. That was already set up a long time ago to be where it was, with the exercise equipment and everything from day one, and then yours came in. So it wasn't something that came in as an extra?
No, there used to be a restaurant there. It wasn't from day one.
But before she started hers.
But it was private entity back then. It wasn't city-owned.
When it's a city...
It was bought with numbers that said that's how it was gonna be paid.
Harley came and sat in my office, as a matter of fact, for over two hours, Georgia, asking me, one, he wanted me to buy the equipment, okay? We did not want that. It's junk equipment. It's a liability waiting to happen. You got treadmills that are stopping on people when they're running.
My thing is, I can't fathom even trying to buy any more equipment up there. You're telling me it's kind of somewhat broke even for the year, but in the years to come, I can't see spending $50,000 or $100,000 to outfit it with exercise equipment. Just throwing more money at a problem. I just, I can't see that.
You know what's more of an insult to me? Is that this same group of volunteers that go out and almost shove Evan's plunge down people's throats on a day-to-day basis. You walk into the grocery store and it's like, you know who you're running into, because they're shoving the plunge down your throat. They're the same ones that picked up the phone and called me on my home phone, on my own time, said, "Kim, is there any way that you would reduce your rates so that we can be a member at both places?" Are you kidding me? My, the business that I run for two people that literally took their savings to provide the community a clean, healthy amenity in our community. Oh.
We have a different purpose, I guess, than just the exercise, what we do have.
Why don't you be a great pool?
Right now, we're operating on what numbers we actually got from the owners, previous owners, and we're trying to operate it so that we can actually make it pay for itself. This is what...
At the cost of running out of taxpaying business?
That was there to begin with. I'm sorry.
Georgia, I'm not gonna allow smoke to be blown here. Here's the thing. The whole ballgame changes. That was private entity at the time. Now it is a city-run entity, okay?
It may be. I'm just saying, this is what we, as taxpayers, are paying for.
Can I redo a statement?
We put this out when we did talk to the community as to how it's gonna pay for us. We do have people that exercise, and we do have people that swim. They do both. They like both.
Senate Bill 188 was passed in 2006, and it was amended for the purpose of prohibiting government entities from competing against private business.
So we were supposed to go in and take it out and not pay for what we already have?
Why was Harley there wanting me to buy this equipment, pennies on the dollar, $500?
I guess I don't know why Harley did that. I'm sorry.
Can the floors support that? Is that running a risk with this equipment out there as it is?
I don't look into that part, for sure.
Now, are you, are you proposing that we do away with the equipment as it goes down and not replace it?
Absolutely.
Or are you proposing just getting rid of it all?
No, I am proposing that, I mean, you're, I'm a full-fledged gym. And we provide the service for that. You guys are a pool. Again, when it was private business, I'm all for private business competition. Game on, because it's, you know, I don't have tax dollars to come and back me up like this pool. I don't have 60-some volunteers out there rallying for me. I have to pay for advertisement. I know you guys pay for advertisement, but I don't get the tax break. You guys are getting thousands and thousands of dollars a year coming into this community to support it, whereas the plunge does not.
All I'm telling you is that we did base the election upon what funds and what was there at the time, and that's all I'm gonna say. That is how we were supposed to support that building.
Okay, so I am asking the council...
And was voted on.
I'm asking the council if I want this competition to stop. I want to work as a community and help support the plunge as well. I mean, there could be some great things brought up there, you know?
We also have a gift shop that sells gold and other things, and swimming suits that Shackle has. I mean, that's not the only thing that it does do, but that is how we based our income.
Okay, Georgia.
Our revenue came from all that.
Yeah, but we was gonna sell the gold, if you remember it, when we first took it over. Don Graves took it all to Rapid, under the praise.
I'm just saying that's what we based our revenue on.
I agree with Kim. As long as I'm a councilman, I won't vote to buy new equipment down there. If the floor is not structured and sound like it appeared as a health risk.
I agree, and it did say in that, that engineer's report...
I don't remember that there was any use of that one.
No, it's in there. It's in both reports, the first one and the second one.
If we were gonna add any more...
When you guys had them on the phone, you should have took that up too.
That's really rude.
I was listening to the phone conversation. They had to change a bunch of stuff.
If you say it needed to be, they needed some kind of engineers to witness the floor before anything else is put up there. And an elevator, have they improved the fire?
That's what they're working on. They're going to be doing that this year.
Okay, so right now, nothing's been done? No, that was a hazard.
There is access though.
I guess I...
You have access in the back.
I'll go along on, as far as I don't believe we should replace the equipment as it goes down, if that's... And I also believe that we've been approached by a boxing club, and I've since learned that there's a private business here that offers a boxing schedule. So I don't understand, I don't see that as a council we should let this outside club use a city building for nothing when that would, when that stuff is available through a private person.
I believe that's already gone by the wayside.
I suppose, I think that's... I just know that the last, our last meeting was, somebody was gonna talk to the Legion, and that's where it was left, and I haven't heard anything about me talking to Legion, so that's the reason I...
Aren't there potentially other uses for that space that you mentioned when I talked to you? Ideas for where the exercise equipment is, so that the plunge could gain revenue if we lost that?
You know, I'm all for, you know, I'm not a stranger to different ideas. Mine, all are not successful. I mean, believe me, I've had a ton of them fail. But I do have, and as a matter of fact, some of the other council members and I discussed, I was looking at purchasing a building here in town to run a zip line. If the city did a zip line, and one of the other council members had said, "Hey, I had that same idea," and run just exactly what Rushmore Caves is doing. I mean, this is a retirement community, but we have children living here. I told the council member, I said, "Take that zip line. Instead of me doing this, city can, I mean, get the insurance much cheaper than something I could." You know, Rushmore Cave, they paid for that, what, in three months? It's a moneymaker. Why can't we put a 3D thing up there, something that's gonna draw people? You're looking for things to draw tourists. Evan's Plunge is a touristy thing. I want to work at the plunge. I want to work with everybody, and I'm so sick of hearing in the community, "Oh, I'm the Evan's Plunge competition." I'm sick of it. You know, I'm about positive, healthy things. I'm just sick of the drama. Sick of it. You know, and it's, I want to be supported. And I, I mean, I was really disgusted that I actually had to come to a council to ask you all to come out there, but I thank every one of you for coming out and doing that, because every one of you should be aware of our taxpaying businesses.
What can we do to help?
I like the motion that he made. I support it.
Not replace the equipment as it goes down.
And I would like in there, no classes that I offer. You know, I wonder how Carol would feel, since she's got her Pilates room up there, if you guys now started offering Pilates.
Or yoga.
Or, well, I mean, it's, we offer yoga and, or Pilates, excuse me, and ballet, and boxing, and spin class, and...
Now, now we're back to, we're talking two private enterprises in competition with each other. That's a whole different...
Oh, and that's a whole different thing, because we both have to show it to work and make it work. But again, that's why I said when I opened this discussion, when we took it on, and Evan's Plunge was still a private business, we had the pool. We had a hot tub. We could have done that. I chose not to, because I didn't want to be in direct competition with another private business. That was my decision that I made. Had I known the city was gonna come in three years later and purchase Evan's Plunge and then try to be in direct competition with me, I'd be like, "Make me tax-free, put me in a pool, and game on."
How many tourists do you get then during the summer?
How many tourists?
Tourists.
I mean, that specifically, I get tourists year-round. They're coming in and visiting their family. But the people that work out at Health for Life, they're about health. They're about wellness. I send people down to the plunge for those that cannot, you know, have stability, balance issues. They would rather work out and exercise in water. Swimming is a great exercise. And I just think you guys need to promote the plunge and be a plunge, be a pool. You know, and come up with a different way to really, if you really want that place to make money, get a direction, instead of trying to be everything, when we already offer that.
We're just going on what we did start, what we bought. We bought the inventory, we bought the equipment, and we bought the building. And that's what we projected our income and our expenses from. This is only our second year, so that is how we are doing it.
Is there a second?
We can't make a motion.
No.
Can't make a motion.
You can make a motion to me on the next agenda, would you?
Put it on the next agenda, set it up.
I guess I...
I'd like you to think about it.
I can see both sides of this issue, and it's really tugging on both ways. And I fear we're going down a little dangerous road here, because we better shut the civic center down, because we, there's other people, lease banquet halls out. We better, you know, it just, it could keep going and going and going. We better stop selling food at the plunge. There's other people that sell food.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was just gonna say.
You know, and where are we gonna end this?
But there, you're selling Nuke burgers and Nuke foods down there and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Again, you want to support. That's why you don't put in a big old pizza parlor, and that's why you don't have a burger joint. You want people to leave.
We can phase that gym out if that's what everybody wants to do.
I don't think it's what the people that are here...
I know there's a lot of old people who use that gym.
Yeah, they use it, and they swim both.
You know, I just, to say we can never upgrade our equipment, to me, we're kind of going down a slippery slope here. The city won't be able to do anything. If that's what we want, fine. But we better think about this a little bit, guys.
But why did the engineer report tell us to get away from it? I mean, why did they specifically tell us that? I'd be interested to know what their...
It also said to close the hot tub.
I would like...
I'd like to have a committee to look at the big picture on all of this before we, you know, it's not gonna be made by Monday night. I think what Kim is concerned about is if this fundraising starts to do that, she'd like to see that stopped until we make a decision to keep the...
I don't think it's even starting.
Well, I don't know. January 1 or January 5?
The month of January.
With them raising money for new fitness equipment? Is that what it's for?
Yes, replaced fitness equipment, but it's also kind of a general fundraiser, so...
She's just hoping you could stop the fundraising for fitness equipment so that we resolve this issue.
I think their main focus was on hot water, if I remember correctly from the meeting, so...
That's gonna take away more...
That's not in the email. It is specifically on...
I attended the meeting, so I do know that they are, that was a big issue for them.
It was more for hot water shopping.
Well, can I say something? As a member of both places, I remember in December or November going to the plunge, and the employees asked me there if I'd be willing to support them getting new equipment. And I told them, "Why would I want to do that?" I said, "You get new equipment, it's junk. You guys have no fire escape. If there's a fire up there, how you get out of that place?" And I told them that, I said, "I go work out at Health for Life Fitness." I said, "We have an excellent gym out there. We have a lot of these different classes out there." And personally, I have benefited from Health for Life Fitness. I have lost over 300 pounds from going out there. And also, I've been to Rapid's Pool, the aquatic center. They run that, that's from the government of Rapid City. They own that pool. It's an awesome pool, but it's not a gym. Yeah, there's other... that pool. It, it's an awesome pool, but it's not a gym. Yeah, there's other classes that they have out there at the Aquatic Center, but it's not a gym, it's a pool. And I think to resolve this, if you guys could just focus on being a pool and let the gym be part of Health for Life Fitness. And, yeah, like, I, I talked to older people too out there who say like, if you're gonna have a knee operation, then you should go to the plunge because the water therapy is really good for, for people's knees. And I quit going to the plunge, working out up there, when I went, when they closed down. And I went to Health for Life and I fell in love with it, because it's clean, it's not leaking. The roof has been leaking for so long that the floor there is damaged. I, I used to be an employee there and when, as a lifeguard there, I would go up there and I'd see it leak, and leak and leak. And I felt sorry for, for, for Vicky and for John and for even Frank Berkhold, who used to run that place. Cause the owners there were not giving the money to fix that place like it should. And as, and as a member and as a, and as a candidate for city council, I am backing Health for Life Fitness 100%.
Okay, what I'd like to do, thanks, Kim. What I'd like to do is, is create a committee amongst whoever in the council would like to be on that committee and from the community, just a vision for the plunge.
Don't we already have that?
Were you able to speak? You had your.
No, I just wanted to, to have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead and then I'll finish.
Um, when we were looking at offering more things for the community, such as classes, I know Kim had mentioned that. Her example is Zumba. One of the things that we were looking at doing was Aqua Zumba, which is a lot different. And people who are older, who have joint problems, it is easier for them to work out in the water. So we were thinking that it was a completely different thing. We didn't mean.
I didn't.
And I understand the equipment thing, and I understand where she's coming from. Whatever city council thinks is best and the direction for the plunge, or the one thing that you can't do is just let it deteriorate. I mean, with the fundraiser that we were looking at doing was to get money to replace current equipment. We didn't wanna get anything new, we didn't wanna expand or get something different. We just wanted to get new working equipment for what is already there and is getting old. So we weren't looking at expanding, we weren't looking on getting something big and new, we just wanted to be safe. And both Evans Plunge and Health for Life do have a lot of, we both look out for the best interest of the community, of their health, and that's what the primary goal for doing that fundraiser and getting that equipment was for, was to get a safer workout place for people. So whether or not we go do this fundraiser, get different equipment, or we get rid of the gym, is the best ways. But taking a half measure on it is the worst thing you can do. Cause that's not in the best interest of people, that's not doing something all the way.
Were you done?
Well, you mentioned you wanna create a committee to, I mean, how many committees do we have to have for the plunge?
I do not have any currently for the council.
So.
Well, except for an advocate.
So what exactly, what direction are you wanting to take?
I, I want members of the council to help decide how we move forward. Because right now, we have gym equipment there, it is in disrepair. We do have a risk, you know, liability issue that we have to address one way or the other. And, you know, people have purchased memberships, assuming that they can use gym equipment there with their membership. So it's not an easy decision. And I do want people to, to think about it a little bit and decide how we move forward with that plan.
Ultimately, it has to come back, the committee can decide what they want, but the council has to decide what they want.
Well, the committee is an advisor to the council.
Yeah, but ultimately, the city council has to vote on it. Whatever's decided and, you know, we can still vote on his motion at some point if we want to.
I would like us to take more time to think about it.
I know, but I'm just saying that ultimately, you know, the committees can get together and you can have, Georgia, and, you know, select you that wanna promote that, and then come back and tell us to leave it the same, and that doesn't necessarily.
So who will that may be composed of? I mean, with the city entity, can I be a part of it?
Sure. I'd like to be a part of it as well. Oh, and I apologize, you work out in the plunge aesthetics, mostly outside. I didn't mean to overlook that. Would anyone else on the committee, since we're already into the list, Carol Anne, would you like to just?
I'll have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, no.
Well, actually, Georgia, let's keep you where you're at and let, you know, if there's someone else from the council.
Yeah, cause that's giving me a cough and flark.
Yeah, so I have two councils, so I'm okay with Carol Anne and Deanne and Kim. And you guys can work on how you're gonna meet and discuss.
Can I help on this committee?
Sure, Chris. Do you wanna help on it?
Absolutely.
Theater is a given. So we'll just decide how you guys meet and move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Any other communications from the public?
I've got something I wanna bring up. Seems like it ain't on the agenda. I've got a note here from the Department of Legislative Audit about this conflict interest stuff that you keep bringing up. And it's not a conflict interest. Me going over the bills, he said it's more or less above and beyond what councilman does. He always says conflict interest, he says conflict interest, me voting on that. And I know all you guys got this in your packet. He said, it sounds like to him that there's some people that's just upset because there's a councilman whose wife works for the city. And they're just kinda like harassing.
I didn't get that, I didn't get it either.
I got it. It was conversation.
I think I got it before.
Everybody got that in their folder.
This is a folder?
No, it's not.
In the Manella folders to the council.
In my folder down the hall?
You don't have folder where you give us all folder?
No, I didn't.
I have an office here, by the way. I did show Cindy that. I showed that.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it.
I showed everybody that. I shared.
It, it was just a personal note to you. I was just saying, if you knew.
Well, you said people from the public, that's why I brought this publicly, so you can tell them it's not a conflict.
That's fine, I'm just cautioning, I'm just cautioning.
I'm getting tired of it, it's getting harassment now. Oh, the hell is me?
It's gonna check your folders. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right.
I've got something, I guess, I don't understand why we keep having these meetings here. There's just, there's just not enough room. I've had so many complaints from the public, cause they're, they're getting confused about meeting times and places. And to me, I hate to have to try to have my back to the people. I don't like to have to try to keep turning around and trying to talk to people or listen to their stuff. So I, I really think we ought to be at the city hall, or I mean, at the civic center where we have a normal meeting.
I agree, and for special meetings, we're gonna keep it to the special topic going forward. We're not going to have all the other activities.
Why wouldn't we have all more meetings down there?
Remember when the attorney general said, it's not a special meeting unless it's an emergency. He said, this is a regular city council meeting, not special.
Then we will have them at Mueller Center going forward.
Hopefully, we won't have to have, costing taxpayers money to have four meetings a month.
I didn't even follow this one, so let's be kind for a moment. Any questions on personnel? Any other communications from the public? Personnel, just FYI there, I believe. Second reading, the ordinance 1152, supplemental appropriation for, it's actually finance officer and city administrator.
I have the second reading, it's 1152.
Is there a certain timeframe that's supposed to happen in there?
It's supposed to be 10 days in each week.
10 days. For as I'm saying that, it could have gotten us a little pickled with the building next door by not allowing the right timeframe to happen.
I brought that up.
Okay, fine. So there's certain timeframes that things have to happen.
Let's stick to this ordinance.
Well, it is. Public has the right to know.
Do you wanna table it till the 5th?
I don't know. I don't, I'm not an attorney, that's why.
I had a paper call saying it was not gonna be, the second reading was gonna be on the 5th, or I would have brought it, I had a copy of the ordinance.
Let's table this till the 5th.
That's for true.
Okay, all business, continue review, discuss, possible motion to approve Personnel and Safety Manual. Misty has provided the changes in your package.
And actually, Carol Anne, we've been trying to do this so that we can start a new year with a new person. I guess this was the last time we could do that. Safety manual should be one with this, I hope everybody got that. And the changes that were in there, I asked God, he really addressed those, there were a couple of them. I think he's able to come in. But mainly, we've written a page to the back, so it's been torn off and given to everybody. When they read it, they sign it, and it's agreed to what's in the manual. And the same with our personnel manual. Both of them will be signed.
The only thing I have a problem with in there is that stuff that you guys added on the city council members. I've talked to our state's attorney, I've actually talked to several other states attorney, other councils, and they said that should no way be included in your employee manual. They said, you are not an employee of the city.
That's right.
That's why it's only.
It's a definition.
But they said you shouldn't even have it in there, basically, cause that, this is an employee manual. This is not.
It's just specifically just a definition.
I'm telling you, we are not employees. And I'm telling you what only state's attorney told me, if you wanna add something.
I'll just put it in writing and give it to us.
Okay, I will. I sure will.
And you don't have to sign this at all, Wes. It's not for you, it's just a definition.
Well, why would you even include the council members in employee anywhere?
So that they know what a council member's definition is.
No, I'm talking, you're looking ramifications you're gonna add.
Like what?
I don't know what. That's why I want the attorney to review everything in there and explain everything.
All it is, all it is is right here in the definitions. That is what you do, right?
If it's just a definition of what a council person is, I guess I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but.
Okay, did you find it somewhere else?
One of the first, one of the first deals I was looking at, I guess I don't have my, my latest current advi, or updated one.
Wes, we did take out all references to the council, other than the code of conduct and the definition reference. Every other reference to.
Apparently, somewhere along the way, a lot was removed.
Yep.
Okay.
Only thing in there is the council code of conduct.
Yeah.
That I see.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Personnel and Safety Manual and begin a new year with a new one.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Yes. Okay, we've got to approve the Personnel and Safety Manual on here. Then the next is review the resolution and discuss. I think that should be, you know, I wanna be sure that's done at the same time.
Are you talking about the resolution for the, yeah, that's in your package as well? So you're saying you wanna approve or dis?
Well, we've got review, discuss, and possible motions. Then we have just review and discuss. It should be the same. Review and discuss and possible motion. Why is it different?
I think the reason we separated those Carolannes, because we cannot complete, and you can pass it based on having this information later, but until the year's over, we can't complete this resolution with the vacation and sick leave accrued balances, because people can still use both of those.
Okay.
And they can accumulate them. So I wanted everybody to get a chance to look at this proposed resolution before we pass it.
Okay, we've looked at it. Can we pass it?
You can, I just can't fill in the vacation and sick leave.
I know there are numbers.
We can approve it.
Contingent time.
Sure.
They can fill that. Cause I just don't want one to be passed without the other.
Cindy, through our discussion, I went ahead and corrected grammatical errors. And there weren't a lot, but just so we're, we flow here, so to speak, combining comments and conjunctions, you know, we do it both ways in this manual, so I kind of highlighted the comments, I selected that. Also.
Does do your comments change content at all?
No.
Okay.
They do not, they do not. They're just not necessary in conjunction of the conjunction.
Okay.
And also on page 14, there's a grammatical error where, see, the first line on page 14, employees, and then apostrophe, phones are expected to protect such cell phone from loss. That doesn't make sense. Employees are expected to protect such cell phones from loss, damage with them. So the phones could be omitted.
So if it doesn't change content, then only.
Well, it clarifies the communication right there, so it makes sense. We could take out phones? Yes.
So with that change, is there any other discussion?
No, the rest of it, hello?
All right, we can share that with Misty, you know, in your comments.
And can I amend my motion to include the resolution for the banking of sick leave and vacation?
I'll second that. So to put them together?
Put them together.
Any further discussion?
That fit?
Yeah.
Is that the safety manual too, or just that?
Yes, safety manual, that's right there. Personnel and safety manual.
So what we will vote on is the Personnel Manual, Safety Manual, and the resolution, all as one.
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hallelujah.
Yes.
Two years. All right, and.
I'm gonna tell you.
Okay, so Personnel and Safety Manual and the resolution that you passed. Thank you. Okay, C on all business?
We discussed everything it says, I just make a motion that we approve across board 52 cents for all permanent full-time employees and a 3% increase for the two contracts we've got.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion?
The contract thing.
Those are, those are.
I know, but their contracts are up for renewal, don't we just put it in their contract?
Yeah, that's why we need to do it now.
Right, that's why we're gonna go.
If we're doing it.
And why do they get 3% of through the 52?
Cause it's a dollar.
Because it's on, it's on a monthly deal rather than an hourly.
And they're not permanent.
The contracts are, and they're not full-time. And neither one of those people have any kind of raise for.
Six year.
Five, six year.
For Renee, yes, Teresa's.
Yeah, and they have no benefits.
By their actual contracts.
And they pay their own taxes.
Teresa's only been here for about a year or so. I don't know.
Just wondered. Okay, so I believe I had a second on that.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried on C. D, the grant writer job description is requested. You guys got a chance to look at that?
I had one question about it.
Sure.
It just exists by this person is part-time in the job description. And I talked to Misty and Legislative Audit today about these two D and E. And they kind of wondered why it didn't state the classification in the job description.
I don't believe that it. I don't believe that it.
They usually, I've, I've not seen a job description yet.
What is that? What's her name? Yvonne? She said usually you've linked in some way, uh, your job description and your, you know, the person you're hiring. You know, it's a new position. That was just their feeling. Because it doesn't tell in here, and it also doesn't tell in the motion, if this person is part-time or full-time.
Well, it has sometimes.
But it doesn't in the law.
Yeah. Um, are you wanting it to?
I don't know. I'm just asking. Should it be, or I don't, I haven't read any job descriptions. I don't know anything about it. Does it ever say whether the salary, full-time, part-time, and does it say for these contract people?
I don't think any of our grant descriptions show that.
Say, say whether they're part-time. They probably should.
Some of them might say full-time. I guess we've changed a bunch. We've changed a bunch of them lately.
But anyway, they might, it might be helpful in the future if they did say that.
Okay.
And because I believe she is part-time, correct?
Very, yeah, okay.
Alright, well, just, I would think maybe you might consider, look into it and consider thinking about adding that to, uh, the job description.
Well, we, we're gonna be looking at all the job descriptions for all city employees in the next month or so. So that's definitely something we can, you know, as we update them, if that applies.
I would make the motion that we hired Stacia Walker as a grant writer.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yep. Um, both those people, uh, Rod Portman said we might want to tell the taxpayers, and you don't tell them anything from this motion. It's a blank check. Maybe possibly amend the motion to list hours, starting date, part-time, full-time, and salaries.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's under the administration of the.
Well, I'm just telling you what I was told by legislating on it.
We have put full-time and part-time in our motions, and you certainly can if you want to. We've done it in the past. We've stated if they're full-time or if they're part-time.
I have a problem having her hour, uh, so much an hour anyway. I think she ought to be a percentage on whatever grants she gets.
That's illegal. We can't do that.
A lot of grant writers that do that.
Well, you have to pay them still a wage. You can't just do that.
Yeah, and they get a percentage of the grant.
We can do that.
I would like somebody to check into that because I don't believe that to be true.
You cannot just base their performance on whether we receive a grant or not. It has to be a wage plus that if we choose to do that.
Is that everywhere? Companies, cities, or what? Private business?
How do we know how many hours she works? I mean, she could work an hour and put down 50 hours. We don't know that.
She'll be under the direct supervision of myself.
She gonna work down here with you?
No, but under direct supervision. She'll be accountable to the hours, the work she produces and the hours she works.
Right on.
There'll be, there'll be a system in place that'll be, she'll be highly accountable to what she produces.
I want to see that system.
The only thing is if we approve this motion as written, she could be full-time, she could be anything. And the taxpayer.
I amend my motion to make it that Stacia Walker, grant writer, is a part-time employee.
And how much an hour?
We've already.
We don't have a.
It's $10 an hour.
No, it isn't. And nothing's been approved until we approve that. You know, we, why can't we just put it in that $10? We didn't, we didn't pass that.
Yeah, we did.
I thought we did.
We did.
We did.
An hour and a half.
I can't hear you.
Did, was it passed last time? I thought it was moved to.
It's always just been moved around.
It's just been moved around.
It's been moved around since October.
Well, we're trying to finalize it now.
So you're saying $10 an hour part-time?
Yes.
We have a question over here.
And you wanted in one motion it was stacked to October 29th. To October 29th.
I've a couple of parts to the question. This is a new position, is that correct? So we just created the position. So where does this position fall in your budget? And where, where's the line item? Where is the line item that was done for this new position?
Professional services.
Professional services and parks is 2029.
Professional services and fees are not employees, are they?
Yeah, we're gonna have to move it if we, if we hire her as a part-time.
So you're gonna have to reappropriate money that was approved by resolution. So don't you have to have a resolution to reappropriate money?
I do not know.
I don't know either. I'm asking.
Yes, we do.
I just don't want trouble. We have enough.
Yes.
It's already been the budget. It's just in a different line item and we would have to reappropriate that money to salaries and wages.
See, the difference is in a private business, we can do that. We can't here. We've got to do it right.
We are aware of that.
Oh, that's an attorney question.
The money was budgeted. We do have to move it around. And we will do that as we are supposed to.
It was budgeted specifically for this new position that was just created? That's the question, I guess.
No, we never, we did not budget that money specifically for this.
Couple of things.
Yes, we did budget money for a grant writer.
No, we did not. If not, they specifically for this.
Well, it was, we increased the professional services parks line item for a grant writer. Yes, we did.
Back to my question. Do you want it stretched to October 29th? That's something you'd ask for.
Well, because we'd approve things in council meetings differently than we are now, she was doing the work back then, yes.
Well, then that should be part of the action. The fact that you have October 29th.
That's how it was.
Is that the right date?
That was the day.
October 29th was the original date that we put, yeah.
Put that in the.
October 29th. Got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and so she's part-time. There are two, she's not part-time temporary. She's part-time under 40 hours a week.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
It'd be about 10. You know, and not, not every week, just based on when we have. We, we are losing lots of opportunities with grants in general. But as you will see with the parks assessment and readout, that the reason why we invested in tall grants was because we were wanting to have a master plan in place so that we could do grant writing because they require a plan. So from my perspective, if we do not have a grant writer writing grants for the parks, we wasted a lot of money on a parks plan.
The park plan is dependent on your grant writer. I looked at it.
Yes.
It's dependent on, you look at it, it's, that's it, that's what it funds it.
So we wanna, I would like to move this forward.
Yep. And what's your motion again?
The motion that Stacia Walker will be the grant writer in a part-time position starting as of October 29th, 2014 at $10 now.
Ruth liked it.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I've not seen it right then. I'm sorry.
Stay, stay.
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
We got it right now. Appreciate it, Carolyn.
Were you just, were you just discussing a job description or were you going, did you need to approve more?
I don't think we need to approve.
It was in a motion. It was on. It's just for their information. You're welcome to tap if you'd like. You got one? Alright. Okay, um, new business plat of lot 4R, Valley View Edition. I saw a lot of you talking to Scott, so I'm hoping those questions were answered for you.
I didn't talk to Scott.
I'll make you most.
Second.
Carolyn, did you want, an individual owns all of this land here in this sliver, and we are just replating so that all, it's not two separate, um, properties. This one.
This would be included in their property?
Yes. So that's all this is, is including that in this one.
The city doesn't need that. That's not an easement or anything?
No, they're, both properties currently are owned by the same person.
Okay.
So it's just combining the two properties into one.
Will we approve them both these at the same time or you did?
No.
Is that a?
Just, just. 4R of Valley View Edition. Did I get a motion?
You have a motion now.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Alright, now going to plat of lots 1R and 2R, Sulphur Springs Edition, Almond Street and Summit Road.
I will make that motion that we approve that plat changes.
Where are we talking? I was drawing weeks. I didn't have a chance to, uh.
It's where, where they built a new road in up there. It was crossing part of the property and it had to be fixed. And that's what's fixing that.
Is this clean or not?
Did I get second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion next time? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Did you say you have second?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you. Um, just information on the, yes, and these will do. Any discussion on any of that? Okay, Misty, can you update us on financial?
Yeah, I was hoping to have a written proposal or an engagement letter from Donna Denker and Associates with the terms and conditions and timing included in it. They reevaluated the offer. I made a phone call after we talked about the last council meeting about the costs because we were also expending the cost for the pre-audit and they agreed to reduce the price another $10,000. So we had already voted on accepting them, but I just wanted you all to know that they reduced the price again. Um, I don't have the engagement letter yet. They haven't prepared it. But once we get that, we need to notify the state and send them a copy of it. It's really just a formality that they officially approve our hiring of the other firm. So that's where we're at with that. And can I move on to the next today? Am I have any questions about that? There is a 2015 annual report workshop. It's a free workshop put on by the South Dakota Municipal League. Well, I shouldn't say free. That's one of the benefits from our inclusion in that group that I'd like to attend. It's January 15th. It's in Huron. We have $2,000 budgeted for training and I plan on using every penny of that with your permission. So not necessarily at this.
No, one trip.
Yeah, not at one trip. I estimated the mileage. I went to MapQuest and it's about $271 in mileage. I, I couldn't find a place to stay in Huron. You wouldn't have to pay for.
Do you need, you want a motion from us?
I'd make a motion.
If you think to. It's in my budget so that I just wanted to make y'all aware that I would like to go to that on January 15th and all the other classes that the municipal league offers.
I don't think we can make a motion in the way you guys are doing this.
But we can, at the next council meeting, we can, we can include it and put it on there.
Yeah, but I need to tell them right away that I'm going. Because it's January.
Well, you can tell them that on the contingency we approve it the next council meeting.
Does it have to be approved or considered budget?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't want to mention it.
Approved already.
So that you knew. I don't necessarily.
So basically, you're just telling us.
I think we do have to.
Basically, you're just telling us that you're going whether we like it or not.
But it'll be money well spent because eventually, hopefully, I can prepare those annual reports and we don't have to pay for pre-audit. So we'd be saving quite good money.
Good idea.
No, I, I encourage you to go, so I encourage you to be okay with it.
I would like to make one comment before we go to the agreement. When people are quoting lawyers or whoever, uh, South Dakota Municipal League, if you would please get it in writing and present it to the council so that we have verification that this is all inclusive and correct.
I need to talk to people, I need to talk to people for the rest of the year, people you want.
I'd like to have it in writing.
I had two things for you in writing in your packet. I had two things in your folder.
I appreciate that.
But I talked to those two people today and I'm getting kind of embarrassed having to call them all the time. Maybe I won't have to call them again and I'll never need anything in writing.
They're there for your convenience as well as everyone else's.
That's right.
But I will get it in writing, but like I said, all, if anything you ever want to doubt me on, I'll put you on the speakerphone. Then you can have the conference call with the person. I'll put you on FaceTime.
No, I don't, I don't want to see it. I want it in writing. I agree.
There you go.
From their office.
Okay. And just, just, uh, so you know, anything official that I do with Carol, opposed going forward, will be an email so you all can contact us with that as well.
Well, for the next council meeting, I'd like to actually put some item agendas on there. I want an explanation from our attorney about this gate. It's still being locked.
I think we ought to block our road out there until that gate's open. I mean, we made a motion on the contingency that that gate would be unlocked and left unlocked and it's never been unlocked since.
I would also like the attorney to update us on our lawsuit with Boulder Falls. I mean, I, I, to me, I mean, there, there's something not right here. I mean, there's.
The ball is in their court.
The ball is in their court.
They have.
Well, I attended the last thing zoning meeting and I guess I'm.
Would you like their attorney to give you an update? Because that is the person that can give you an update, not Carol. It would either be Jason.
Jason's our attorney, not theirs.
I said it would either be Jason or their attorney. So I would highly recommend that you have their attorney give you an update because the ball is in his court.
That and that works for me too.
Well, what happened to the Delta Committee?
For what?
For the lawsuit.
Never, I never.
Don DeFries, you said he was trying to do that. Whatever happened with that?
He's talked to a couple of people, but, you know, we've, they've gone a completely different direction.
I know, I know the people that live out there.
That should be executive session stuff.
Yeah.
More than I can talk about.
No, no, that's, the lawsuit bill's in the paper every, every time. That's, he just asked for.
Yeah, what Wes said was fine, but when we start talking lawyers and stuff.
Their attorney needs to give us an update.
The Delta Committee was public. That was in the paper. The Delta Committee.
I didn't see. It wasn't, Carolyn.
I thought you were saying I said something that I shouldn't.
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.